All right, we have 6:30, so we'll call the March 22 city council meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, with that, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to public comments, if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that's not on the agenda tonight, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to the consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull five D.
Five E?
D.
Five D, okay. We will pull five D and move that down to seven A five. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with pulling five D for further discussion?
I'll move that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, that'll take us to the public hearing to vacate the right-of-way at Park Point, resolution three point twenty-two point twenty-one point ten.
All right, so you're gonna have to bear with me, there's a bit of information that kind of builds on four different items on the agenda tonight. Actually, I think we're gonna start by, did you open the, sorry, public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'm just gonna get to that quick so everybody can see it. Hold on, try to find a faster way. All right, sorry. Okay. So the first part of the Coldwater Crossing addition discussion tonight is the public hearing related to the right-of-way vacation of Park Point. So this evening, the city council is being asked to consider several things related to the Coldwater Crossing eighth addition application. I'll start with a summary of what is being asked of this evening. So the applicant, Loomis Development LLC, with the permission of the property owner, Coldwater X LLC, has put in a request to go through the process of setting up the eighth addition of Coldwater Crossing for the development of residential lots. So with that, staff has been reviewing the application for some time and has the following information to report. So future land use per city code, this property is designated as low-density residential. This is what the applicant is asking the land to be used for. With that, there are several steps that need to be taken or have needed to be taken to develop the land. So, a little history on the property, it was originally platted preliminarily approximately seventeen years ago. Since then, the plat has expired and no extension was asked for. So the original owner had, seventeen years ago, had lost the property to the bank, who then sold it to the current owner, Coldwater X LLC. In September of 2018, the developer or the owner presented to the council for approval, a new preliminary plat and preliminary planned unit development plan. The final play out, the final planned unit development plan and the street vacation of Park Point were never presented to the council, however, they did file for several extensions on this project. So, let me bring up a picture of Coldwater Crossing. So this is just an aerial map of the Coldwater Crossing development. And then this is the preliminary plat that was approved for Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. So this includes ninety-six single-family lots with seven outlets, seven outlots. The final plat being asked of is forty, I mean thirty-two of the ninety-six lots that were approved with the preliminary plat. So all of the thirty-two lots in the eighth addition final plat were previously graded and were ready for streets and utilities seventeen years ago. So that part of the project is already good to go. And then this is the final plat that we are, the property, the lots that we're talking about, the thirty-two. So, the applicant has applied for a planned unit development. With that, it allows the lots to match the development that was seventeen years ago. So right now, we've changed our code to, the lots have to be eighty-five foot wide lots. But this allow, by filing for a PUD, it allows the lots to go, to be consistent with the old addition, which is seventy-five feet. Two outlots would be platted with this final plat for the eighth addition. Outlot A would be retained by the owner for future development. And then outlot B would be deeded to the city of mayor for stormwater management purposes. And then this should all be recorded with the county. Little information, the street access will come from two different points for this phase, Riverbend Trail will continue into the project and loop back around Coldwater Crossing, which is the second entrance, and then three stubs for future street extensions are shown on the plat. So with that, at the January 5th, 2021 Planning Commission, the Planning Commission voted to recommend final approval of the final plat, PUD plan in the right-of-way vacation of Park Point. And I'll go into Park Point in just a second. I'm trying to do the whole thing so we can present everything at one time. So again, the PUD would allow for different lot standards and the city code. It would also allow for variation in the street right-of-way width, which it would, with this addition, it would allow it to be fifty feet, except for the extension of Seventh Street Northwest. And I will go into that a little bit more in a second. No comments have been received from the public since this memo has been put together, but there could be some comments tonight. No parkland dedication is required with this plat because it's already been met with prior phases of Coldwater Crossing. Again, the right-of-way width under the PUD for the streets would be fifty feet wide, again, that's consistent with the development seventeen years ago. Right now, our requirements per the subdivision ordinance is sixty feet. Seventh Street Northwest is proposed to be sixty feet since it's expected to be a third entrance to the development eventually. And so it would be a minor collector's street. This would be a variation from, as part of the PUD as well, because that collector, or minor collector's streets are normally seventy feet. Street vacation, so as part of the approval process, the street vacation of Park Point has been, has been requested. When Coldwater Crossing second addition was platted, this area called Park Point was part of the original plat. It was expected to be a street extension at some point, however, in the new layout, the access has shifted westward. So due to that change in the location of the street, the right-of-way will need to be vacated, and that is, that requires a public hearing, which we're doing at this moment. Staff supports the vacation, and along with that, if approved, the curb and gutter that exists for the future road will be removed and the permanent curb would be put in its place. So with that, we can stop there for the public hearing. So with that, we are asking, as part of the Coldwater Crossing eighth addition, to start there and accept any public comments on that vacation, and then we will move forward with other, if approved, other parts of the Coldwater Crossing development approval process.
Can you maybe just go back to one of the other maps, Maggie?
Yep.
The one that shows the new cul-de-sac and the...
Yeah, I think I can show exactly, so this is the Park Point, down one more. Oh, all right, gotta go up, hold on.
It's page five on, is what I'm showing. There you go.
Okay.
So really high level, Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong, so right now, there's a stub in right about here.
Correct.
For this road, and we want to vacate that now and move it over here, correct?
Correct.
So right now, this is right-of-way, public access, and we're vacating that stub. Because the cul-de-sac is, or that road's now moved and the cul-de-sac's moved, so that's over, high level on what we're doing right now.
Right.
Anyone have any comments on it, any concerns on that, that they want to voice on moving that?
Well, I had an issue with, like, the referral, it might be a technicality, but they kept saying in the, in the literature about seventeen years versus the 2018. And I couldn't find the seventeen-year-old plat, so I went out and looked it. So where the stub was, is where that cul-de-sac was gonna, it was gonna end up into a cul-de-sac. And I thought that was interesting, because they talked about how the grading was already there and, you know, things fit into a, the puzzle fit, which is not really true. You're gonna have to regrade the whole thing to put the new cul-de-sac in where it fits on that sixty-foot road, which...
I think they'll have to, correct me if I'm wrong, the city planner was not able to attend tonight, but I think what he meant was that most of the preliminary, like, the residential lots were graded, as long as, as well as the street. But I, I'm thinking that there will be some re-grading of that area.
I believe you, they're gonna have to regrade for that cul-de-sac.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that's just one of the, the minor points, I mean, the seventeen versus the 2018, and then what our minimum standards are. They're the same as they were now as back in 2018, with the farthest minimum width of lots and streetage.
Right, well, are you saying that they're the same as...
Well, they use, they, they use the plat as, like, it was platted back seventeen years ago. Where the minimum seventy-five, where our standard now is eighty-five. And the street is fifty and seventy? So I, I think that's somewhat misleading as well.
Well, I think, so I, again, the city, I can only answer basic questions, but as part of, I don't exactly know what the seventeen years ago was. But what he was telling me is that as part of the approval process, to be consistent with how it was platted years ago, the applicant is requesting a PUD, which allows flexibility in those standards. So based on our current subdivision ordinance, we require eighty-five and the streets to be sixty. So to fall, fall back, to be consistent with seventeen years ago, they have to apply for the PUD to be able to kind of negotiate the different sizes in order to be consistent with how the development was designed in the past.
That's what I'm trying to say, this is a different design, unless I can see the plat seventeen years ago.
Right, part of it is, it is different.
There you go.
I, I, I'm trying to under, I mean, I'm not trying to work against you, I'm trying to be transparent.
It was just like, that's, that's one thing I wanted to hear, the second one was that I, I don't know why we're changing the standards.
Dave, do you have something else?
Yeah, if, if I could, I'll... So, kind of back to what's the same, what's different, actually, the, when you, when you look in the aerial of the city, you kind of see the way it was laid out, because it's all been graded out there. So this, this road is in there, some of these stubs are in there, that vacation is right in here.
Well, I know.
And, and that cul-de-sac you talked about. One of the things that's changed since that originally was put together was the city has required this outlet to Seventh Street. It was never part of the original layout of the development. So that's one thing that changed, and so when you look at getting that road up there, it kind of changed the way you can configure those lots in there, and it fits. And so that's part of the reason for the vacation and reconfiguring this piece up here to provide for that road connection. Some of the other things that have changed since then, to the point of the lot sizes, again, trying to use what's already been graded and the work that's already been done out there, kind of sets those, those lot sizes and what you can fit in there. So that's part of the reason for the PUD, is to go back to make this work as much as we can, given the timeframe that it was originally constructed. Some of the things we've changed is, that we've learned along the way, the ponds now are gonna be in city outlots, they used to be in easements. So we've changed the plat to make sure that the city owns and can maintain the ponds. And then the other thing is, we'll see some easements that come here where we're gonna have storm pipes again.
It's there.
What's that?
The storm.
Right, and the way we would have used, we used to do that is that it would be in an easement. Again, now we've got to dedicate, well, it would be in the easement on a platted lot. Now we provide that easement that connects to our outlot that we'll own and maintain. So we've made some of those changes to make it easier to take care of and to maintain it long-term. But it's this combination of trying to get it up-to-date based on our current standards and things we've learned from past developments, and trying to use what has already been constructed best fit.
And it's...
The fifty-foot road on Riverbend Trail, isn't that kind of narrow for, as much traffic is gonna use that? And if, say, two cars are parked in there, and I've got to ask the fire department, since they're here, with the equipment getting bigger and bigger, is that gonna be a hassle?
It doesn't impact the width of the road, the right-of-way's fifty feet, so that impacts the corridor that we have, put the utilities in, that, you know, the, the cable, gas, all those things that, that fit in the right-of-way with our water sewer, the actual road width.
Curb to curb.
Curb to curb doesn't change depending on the right-of-way, it will be the same width as the other streets in Coldwater.
What, what will the curb to curb be on, on Riverbend and Seventh?
Oh, I don't know if I have that off the top of my head, do you guys have that? Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify too, because you're correct that it doesn't match seventeen years ago, but it matches the preliminary plat that was approved in 2018.
Yep. So again, it, it is, it's, to your point, it's kind of this combination of trying to address things, get, get it to current standards, address some of the issues, lessons learned of the past, but acknowledging that this is a development that's going on for a while, already graded, and they're trying not to have to redo it. And it was laid out with the fifty-foot right-of-way. If you make it sixty, you start ending up with lot size issues and kind of going back to the drawing board.
High level then, Larry, does that answer your questions for now?
Sure now.
Okay, because we'll keep moving with the, the public hearing, and we can discuss more of this when we get down to seven A, one and two, when we approve the preliminary plats and, and development agreements. So any other questions, any other comments anyone has that would like to speak during the public hearing, public hearing on the vacation of Park Point? All right, with that, and Maggie and you had indicated there were no phone calls or emails regarding...
There were not.
The vacation, okay. Well, with that then, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll look for a motion then to approve the resolution.
Does anyone have any, did you ask for any comments?
Yeah, yeah, I, yep, I did.
You did, sorry.
Yep. And one other, anyone who want to speak to it? All right, yeah, then we'll close the public hearing. And we'll look for a motion to approve resolution three point twenty-two point twenty-one point ten.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. And Maggie, that'll take us to seven A, one, Coldwater Crossing eighth addition, PUD.
All right, one second. So I, I already provided kind of a project history and, and overview and summary of kind of what we're doing for the eighth addition. With that, we do need to approve or consider approval of resolution three dash twenty-two dash twenty-one dash eleven, approving the final planned unit development, PUD, plan for Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. So with that, the PUD, staff is recommending approval of the PUD, which is highlighted. Again, it's, it's the ability to, to be flexible with planning for development. So we are, in this case, the applicant is requesting that we be consistent with previous plating for the whole Coldwater Crossing development. So this would allow, lot sizes would meet all requirements for the R1 district, except they would be allowed to be seventy feet wide instead of the eighty-five feet requirement. Also, the right-of-way width, the street right-of-way for Riverbend Trail, Timber Drive and Hickory Lane would be allowed at fifty feet instead of sixty. And then Seventh Street Northwest would be sixty feet instead of seventy. So with that, staff is recommending six conditions included in the PUD that are highlighted in the resolution. And that includes any engineer comments, any, any comments from the engineer contingent on approval and recording of the final plat of Coldwater Crossing eighth addition, that the, that the PUD would be good for all phases of the Coldwater Crossing eighth addition preliminary plat, which is good for five years from the date of approval, which was September 10th of 2018. And that there's approval of the development agreement. And on top of the development agreement for Coldwater Crossing eighth, a PUD agreement could be executed. That is all highlighted in the resolution, so staff is recommending approval with those six conditions. So with that, I, I can, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Maggie, I've got one, do you know what the original park dedication was?
Like, the total amount that Coldwater Crossing paid into the development, or to the city for park dedication fees? I don't have the total off the top of my head, I can get that to you and email it to you, but it is satisfied at this time. And so we, we don't require any park dedication fees with this phase. I think there are, there is open space that's gonna be dedicated in this, in the preliminary, plan for this preliminary phase, but not in Coldwater Crossing eighth addition in the final plat. So at this time, we...
Outlet C, right?
What?
Outlet C is gonna be dedicated for public use, but that's not in this particular...
Outlet C's stormwater and wetlands.
At this point, there's no plan for park dedication, it's been satisfied. The developer at the time came to an agreement with the city, and in lieu of a park, they came to an agreement back in 2004 or '05, somewhere around there, that they dedicated money to the city instead of park dedication.
And I believe part of the rationale was, of that was because of its proximity to Old Schoolhouse Park, that the cash could then be used in other ways to benefit the residents.
All right, so at this point, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution three point twenty-two point twenty-one point eleven, which is the final planned unit development plan for Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Seven A two, Coldwater Eighth Edition Final Plat and Development Agreement.
Okay, so the next phase to be approved for the Coldwater Crossing eighth addition is the final plat, known as Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. Let me just bring up the map. Okay, so, that's the preliminary. Okay, so this evening, we are, staff is recommending approval of resolution three dash twenty-two dash twenty-one dash twelve, the final plat. That does also include the development agreement, that is included in your packet. The final plat approval is being recommended with twenty-four conditions from the city. Those conditions range from just, and they're also included in the development agreement. It, it relates to park dedication, street names, sidewalks, trails. It's, it was dependent on the Park Point street vacation, other areas that they need to see compliance as they develop this lot. So with that, I am available for questions on any of those twenty-four, or twenty-four conditions. Otherwise, we are, staff is recommending approval of that resolution that would follow those twenty-four conditions. Again, it also includes, or I guess we could do a separate motion for that development agreement, if you have any questions on that as well. That development agreement highlights the responsibilities of both parties, so the city and the developer. Example, overview of the development area, what's allowed, how and when improvements will be done, permitting, fees and finances, performance standards, inspections, insurance, and the like. And the development agreement is consistent with other agreements that we've had in the past, and it has been reviewed by both parties on the city attorney. So with that, I'm available for, for any questions on both the resolution and the development agreement.
Any questions for the administrator? So Maggie, you want those separate?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Captured in the resolution?
Right.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution three point twenty-two point twenty-one point twelve, the final plat for Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. We have a motion from Boater, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero, now I'll look for a motion to approve the development agreement between Loomis Development LLC and the city of mayor for Coldwater Crossing eighth addition. Motion from Boater, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, thank you, Megan. That'll take 7A3 2020 Audit Report.
All right, Mayor and Council, this evening, we do have Steve McDonald from Abdo Eichenmeyer. This is the city's auditing firm. He's here this evening to present the findings from the 2020 audit report. And I will bring up your PowerPoint. Might take a second, but you can get, you can get started.
Get ready for it. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to go through the audit report with you. As you know, it's an annual process that the city goes through. You're required by statute to have an audit. The work that our firm does is, in addition to performing the audit, we draft the financial statements and prepare a management letter that summarizes our findings. In our audit, we do a number of tests of transactions and account balances, ultimately to make sure that the numbers are materially correct. That, as a result, we issued an opinion, and it's an unqualified or clean opinion that we issue on the financial statements. So that's always your main objective as you get through the process. Let's see, let's go down a couple of pages. Put the pressure on you. That's all right. Yeah, the, the other part of our audit is that we consider the legal compliance, the city's legal compliance with Minnesota statutes. We have a number of checklists that we go through related to depositing cash and investing and bonding and bidding and those kind of things. So as we walk through that, we point out one finding that I'll go through in a second. And then we also consider the internal control of the city, helps us plan the audit. And we had three findings this year. I'd say that two of these are kind of the normal small city comments, and then the other one was related to the legal compliance. And I will point out that we had four or five findings from the prior year that didn't occur. So that's good progress. We'd made recommendations and you implemented those, so things went well. The, the three findings we have related to preparation of financial statements. And we, like I mentioned, we draft your financial statements, but we're not part of your internal control. And it basically comes back to a number of people involved in the process. You need to have somebody that's really an expert in all the accounting standards related to government that's there, and that's often difficult to find in a smaller city. Limited segregation of duties with basically a two-person office, it's challenging to adequately segregate the accounting functions. What's really important, I think, from a council perspective is asking questions about claims, being part of the budget process, having good explanation of when there's variations, why did they happen? Those are really good compensating controls. And then the legal compliance finding related to the timely payment of an invoice. So you have 35 days to pay an invoice once it's presented, and we found a few in the testing that we did that weren't. Again, that's a relatively common finding, but it's something that you want to tighten up and make sure that, that aware of through the payment process. Okay? Next page. Those are the, the audit, or the findings we had last year. Again, that's, I think it's important to note that we didn't have any of those this year, so that shows some good improvement. So let's go into the next page. This is a graph of the general fund relative to your following year's budget. And you see the big drop in 2020, that's actually a good thing. We talked about maintaining an adequate working capital balance in the general fund of 40 to 50 percent. You transferred out a significant amount that was in excess of that 40 percent and transferred it to capital project funds. We see that as a good process, helping build reserves for future capital needs. And you can see that highlighted there. Okay, next page. The revenue and expenditures compared with budget. You're favorable on both sides. Revenue is about $92,000 more than budget, and expenditures were under budget by $28,000. The big transfer out, $656,000, that's what I just referred to on the previous page. So overall, brought down fund balance into a decent working capital number, so there's nothing to be concerned about that type of decrease. It was planned. Okay, general fund revenue by type, what this does is just show those four different categories. You can see the taxes in the general fund dropped down in 2020. I think in, in 2019, there might have been a capital portion of the levy that was left in the general fund. But overall, you'd expect to see that be relatively consistent year over year. You do see some fluctuations in license and permits as your development activity grows or decreases each year. Okay, next one. On the expenditure side, really four areas stand out. What you spend in general government, public safety, public works, and then capital outlay. And the, the largest category being general government, so about a little over $350,000. Okay, next page. You only have two special revenue funds. They're your EDA and your fire department contributions fund, relatively small balances that were really close to what they had been in the prior, prior year, about $46,000 in total. And then capital project funds, you have your fire truck, public works, community center, and then your equipment fund and park improvements. I think two or three of those were the recipient of the transfer out that you did in the general fund. So good reserves for more long-term, things like the fire truck and public works and equipment. Again, building reserves for the future is, is good. Okay, next page. Our debt service funds, we only report two debt service funds in the governmental funds. We'll have a couple more in the, in the water and sewer. But 1.1 million left there before the bonds that you've issued in the, in the upcoming year. And the 2014 bond will be paid off in 2023, and I think you wrapped your fire station bond around that, that levy. So planning that whole thing out, again, is a good practice. Okay, the enterprise funds, beginning with the water fund. First thing I'd point out is that there's a healthy cash reserve in, in the water fund, and it's been consistent for each of the the years presented. So it's not a big hockey stick balance where things are really going up. It's consistent and managed. The graph up above, what that is intended to show is the operating receipts relative to your operating expenses. So that blue bar is the receipts, and the gray one is the operating expenses, and then the green is your debt service payments. What it does highlight is the importance of connection fees to pay the bond payments in those funds. You can see it's about equal or a bit short. That's connection fees that are making that up. Okay, sewer fund is also very, very similar. Healthy cash balance. I think when we look at your CIP down the road, I think there's some big projects two or three years down the road where that cash balance will come in handy for funding some of that cost as well. So overall, good cash balance there. And then stormwater's a lot less in, in activity and dollar amount, but positive cash balances is $69,000. Here, you can see the blue bar, the last two years has been significantly more than your operating expenses. But again, a capital project takes that out pretty quickly when you get into that. And then this graph just shows all of the cash in the city. You know, we talk about all these individual buckets, but what does it look like in total? And you see it pretty consistent year over year, about $6 million in cash when you add everything together. Again, you buy, the accounting requirements that you keep track of those by fund, and this just shows everything together. Okay, and then I'll just maybe do one or two of these. So the, the first one is tax rate over the past four years. We put together these ratios with information that the state auditor has, so we can break it down by cities your size, that class four cities, and then cities in Carver County. And you can see like on tax rate, you compare favorably to the comparable cities. And then taxes per capita, reasonably consistent over that four-year period as well. And then debt per capita, that's a positive message too. You can see that going down in each of those years presented. And then consistent current expenditures per capita, so what you spend on running the city has been consistent for those four years. Capital expenditures, big spike in 2020. As you do projects, that will go up. And then debt service as a percent of total, this is often a measurement percentage that bond rating agencies look at as you issue debt. So you can see that your percentage, so you take everything that you spend in the city, what do you spend on debt? It was 14% in 2020. For a city that's growing and adding, that's a reasonable percentage. Okay? And then the water and sewer debt service coverage, this graph supports what I was saying before about needing connection fees. So if you're under 100%, basically it's operating revenues, does that pay for your debt service? And in your case, you're requiring connection fees to get to pay those bond payments. Okay? There's our team. Jeff and Zach and Dan were the ones out doing fieldwork, and Bonnie makes it all happen. She's the manager on the job, so she does a great job for us too. So I could take any questions if anybody has anything.
Steve on any of the slides? No, for a few, any?
Not at the moment, no.
Megan, anything you want to add, or any questions you have?
No, I think it went really, really smooth. And this year, because of COVID, we had to do most of it virtual, so we just had quite a bit of change there, but I still think it went really smooth, so.
Yeah, it definitely changed versus being out here, but it's what we're dealing with, with all these audits.
That's everywhere, so knowing I do, just seeing the findings compared to the previous years and that we're getting them taken care of, I think, is a, is a huge
Yeah.
milestone for us, so that's great.
Yeah.
Like I said, some of those, we just can't change right now with the size of the city and the separation of duties and some of it. We'll, we'll be talking about those still for years to come, but I think it was real positive, so I appreciate
I agree.
I appreciate your team and everyone getting this together for us.
Thank you.
That's a job well done. Perfect.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll be back within a month or so with a long-term plan too, so.
Right.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Megan, 7A4 Smart Water Program.
All right. So Mayor and Council, bringing this back for discussion, it's a Smart Water Program participation with Carver County Water Management. So recommendation tonight is to review the attached draft agreement between the City of Mayor and Carver County Water Management. And also to finalize that agreement in the future to determine the amount that the city may want to contribute for the year 2020 towards that program. So I know, just a little background, Carver County is working with RACIO, which is a, an organization that provides smart controllers that link, when you connect them to irrigation systems, it just provides information to the resident as far as how, how to water your grass more efficiently and to reduce water needs. And the benefits is it just aims to conserve groundwater resources. It just educates residents a little bit more on their water usage and, again, protects the city's groundwater supplies. So Carver County is teaming up with RACIO to offer this program, and then the city, and they'll, they'll essentially essentially have the parent agreement between them, and then we would have like a secondary agreement between us and Carver County. So what would happen is, let's see, responsibilities. So the website would be created specifically for the Carver County program, hosted by RACIO. They'll be responsible for managing and invoicing for the program. They're currently, the county's still working on that final agreement with RACIO, and then we're going to kind of, if we choose to participate, we will finalize our agreement as well. There's an estimated one-time $5,000 setup fee for the program, and Carver County is still estimating that to be between, to be between 200, 500 per city. And then again, the cities need to determine how much they want to contribute, if they want to contribute an extra amount for discount. So the city's responsibility would be to advertise and to market the program to residents. If the city does participate, they automatically get a a discount on the controllers depending on the zone. So it's an $80 decrease, so eight zone and then 16 zone options are highlighted there. $8 savings, so the eight would be 229 originally market value, down to 169. And then the 16 zone would be 189, down from 279. Again, so we would do the marketing. RACIO would be responsible for the website, direct contact with residents to do the purchasing and invoicing. They would do customer support and tech support. They would also do a lot of the information on their website with videos and pamphlets. And then we would connect, we would coordinate with RACIO to coordinate our, like the last five digits of our accounts so that we can determine, they can determine that they're real customers of the City of Mayor. So next steps. At the January 25th meeting, we did talk about this at a workshop session. There was a recommendation of just continuing to look into this partnership and opportunity, possibly, I think there was discussion on doing a $1,500 contribution, 500 for setup, possibly $20 discounts for 50 controllers for the year 2021. If, if for whatever reason, we sell out really quickly, we can always refill that account or we can wait till 2022. Again, residents would still get that discounted rate. So the city improves, moves forward with the partnership, we would need to finalize that number, so then we can finalize the agreement with Carver County Water Management. If you have any questions on the agreement that's attached, you can let me know, and we can talk through that.
Can we get an idea of how many homes we think have irrigation systems?
I did not include that number in that. I do not have that information.
Do you happen to know off the top of your head?
Yeah, I think off of that DNR report, it was about 470.
Okay. So that's about maybe a little over half?
Half of the, the counts.
Thank you.
So now, all the new homes going in would not have this system, but they're going to have a similar system, I would imagine, with technology the way it is. Correct? So I mean, we're not going to get the new houses necessarily.
Yeah, I believe they're putting all, I believe they're putting all smart ones in now.
Okay.
For the ones, I believe.
Right.
And you talked about the city will be responsible for marketing this?
Yeah, we would, we could.
What's our plan? Do we have a plan on how, how that's going to look?
Yeah, so they, they haven't gotten us the marketing information yet, but they are going to supply us with, with pamphlets and education materials that we could then link to either social media, our website, or our newsletter.
Is there anybody that can come out and like have a demonstration on how it possibly works for residents?
Yeah, I think we could do, coordinate something with Carver County.
I mean, I'm sure everybody's kind of tech savvy nowadays. I don't think it's going to be that bad, but.
Yeah. No, I think we would be able to work with Carver County. I could also work with, see if they have some good videos on the RACIO website as well that we could present.
It'd be interesting to see the marketing material, just so we know what's being said. You know, idea of how much money residents can save annually, you know, to make sure the return on investment's there, but obviously, all that will determine if someone does, purchase one or not, so.
Right.
All right, any other questions, comments from Megan on this?
Was, was our portion of the fee not to exceed 500, or?
We did not make a motion yet on that.
Because he said it's, it's 250 to 500. We don't know yet exactly what it'll be?
Oh, the contribution for setup fees. They do not have the final amount yet, so we could, if we did make a motion, we could do a motion that says up to 500.
It'll determine how many cities obviously join, join in the program. All right, so with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the Smart Water Program participation, participation agreement with Carver County, and if there's a motion on some financial contributions we'd like to make to the plan.
I'll make the motion that we participate in the program and use, under Maggie's suggestion, or under the next steps, that we fund the program at 1,500 with a contribution up to $500 for the setup fees with a $20 discount for 50 controllers for the year 2021.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
A second?
Do we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing not all, in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 3-1. With that then, Maggie, we'll move to 7A5, which was added, Public Works Position Approval that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Well, that's me? Right?
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I don't even know what page that's on now, Maggie, was that on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to have to go back up.
Yeah.
Might be easier to close it and reopen it.
Right. I know.
How many pages?
Yeah, so did you have any questions, Larry? Essentially, we are, every year we consider hiring a Public Works seasonal position. We did not last year, mostly because of COVID. So this position is assigned to parks typically to help with mowing, weed whipping, picking up garbage, watering, and other assignments as needed. So this, oh, I'm sorry, oh yeah, okay. So we did discuss this at a Public Works Committee meeting. And so the suggestion that we were putting, or staff was putting forth was starting, posting the position at the end of March with a recommendation of, depending on how quickly we can get the number of applications and how we can do interviews, probably starting May or June. So our budget for this position is a part-time seasonal person for 30 hours per week for up to 13 weeks and up to $15 per hour. So the total budget amount, depending on, is 5,850. Sometimes we don't get to that, we don't use the whole budget, it all depends on need and scheduling. I did include the job announcement as well.
What specific questions did you have, Larry?
The only issue I had was the minimum qualifications, that the responsible individual has to be 18 years of age. Why couldn't we go to 16?
We discussed this, and I can double check, but the last time we discussed this two years ago, because of the equipment that they're using, we have insurance requirements that we, or we have requirements that we have to meet for insurance reasons, so.
Were you insured with the league?
Yep.
Well, you know, in 2020, they changed the child labor laws.
Okay, so I.
They can operate mowers, trimmers, what the job description's asking for, so.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like you to research that, and I can give you the statute number if you want, but.
Okay, no, that's, I mean, that's good to know, I was not aware of that, so.
Yeah, this has kind of come up at some Public Works Committee meetings too, because some cities kind of struggle finding someone. You know, right around that 16 to 18 age group would be prime. But when it comes to, there were some, with the league, if you, they operate a vehicle, or even if they have a license, if they operate a vehicle down the road, or how they're, if they're even, they can run the mower, but they can't drive the mower down the road, there's some really goofy rules and stipulations that we got to kind of look at. So it was kind of one of those things where now, a lot of cities in the area, that's how they advertise, must be 18 or older, just for, if they get, you know, here we drive our mowers everywhere, if they get hit on the mower going on the road, or if something, then the league might not cover the injuries and that sort of thing.
But I'd like it explored since they changed the labor laws?
Yeah, they may have done that, so, yeah, it's worth a look for sure.
Yeah, no, I can look into that. I, as we all know, laws are always changing, so I will look into it and see if that, you know, check into that law and then see if our insurance coverage has changed based on that.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve Public Works Position with the one stipulation that the age will be followed up with the league and changed if necessary.
I'll move that.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Aye.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Well, I think Maggie can just let me know, and I'll trust her to make that.
Forward.
If that's, if that's fine, rather than hold it out.
And go with what.
Yeah, whatever Maggie finds, you know, her.
Yeah, I can give you an update too before I.
That and your weekly update.
Mm-hmm.
I'm uncomfortable moving forward.
I know a lot of people are looking for summer employment now.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. All right, 7B1, 2021 Street Project Bid Results. Now, let's get back to where we.
All right, so this is, and I'll have Dave help me out this, with this too. This part of the agenda has several parts to it as well. So the first part is the bid results. So Dave, I can, I can do a little summary and then I might have you help out. So as you know, we, this year, we're in our second year of our 20, or our street management, or street improvement plan. So this year is the improvements that consist of reconstructing Third Street and Fifth Street from Blue Jay Avenue to approximately 200 feet east of Ridge Road. So as part of this project, curb and gutter would be added to portions of the project area. Sanitary sewer would be replaced as well as water main and water services. So the project, originally when we looked at the feasibility study in December, was, was projected to be about a little under 1.5 million. And then per policy, the city's portion, assessment policy, the city's portion was 891,000. And then the assessed was proposed to be around a little under 600,000. So since then, the engineer, we did, we finalized the plans and specifications of the project. We advertised and bids were solicited. On March 17th, we did receive 10 bids for the construction portion of the project. So the lowest being 959,730 dollars and 75 cents. And the highest was 1,373,830 dollars and 23 cents. So that was based on the construction estimate of the project, which is 1.1 million. And so with it coming in at that low estimate, we're seeing a reduction of about 140,000. So the apparent little bidder was Molitor Excavating, and the engineer did reference checks. And we are recommending the approval of the, of that bid tonight. I don't know if Dave, you want to go into more about that or?
No, I think that pretty much sums up, something about 10 bidders is a lot better, so that was good. Project came in under the engineer's estimate, which we had actually, the whole report was more based on what we were seeing. So we think we got good bids, we did follow up on Molitor Excavating to ensure that they're capable of completing the work that we specified and feel comfortable in recommending that we do.
Perfect. So have you personally worked with? Yeah, right, right, okay. And with that, we do have a responsibility to take the lowest responsible bid. So if there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to bid or to award the 2021 Street Improvement Project to Molitor Excavating in the amount of 959,730 dollars and 75 cents.
I have a question for you, just one thing I didn't follow. So the original estimate was 124, right, it's like 955,000?
Yeah, so I'm going to explain that a little bit. Yeah, so the construction portion is, that was based on the 1.1 million. So the new numbers that we're seeing now, so the original estimate was, yeah, was about 1.1,486,000. We're now estimating the project to be about 1,250,000. So that's a reduction of, I gotta find it. I think it's about, oh, 300, oh no, sorry, it was in here somewhere.
140,000, something like that?
I think it's, I think it's like 200 and.
So that's added on to that 900?
Yeah, so 250,000 plus the 900, or I don't have a calculator. Yeah, so it's about, I think, 260,000 difference on what we projected originally. And so I just had to find where I have the assessments. So the assessments.
So originally, we, we had estimated assessable portion of the project just under 600,000. Based on the bids, which, we haven't built it yet, so we don't know final cost. But based on the bids, the assessable portion of the project is 464,000.
Yes.
It's come down 140, assessable portion, based on the bids, is 140,000 dollars less than we give them.
Dave's mic, turn your microphone on, Dave.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, so Dave, I don't know if we want to go through next step. So tonight is, is more so, yeah, accepting the bids that came in and approving the project to move forward. Also tonight, we're looking to approve this, the financial, the city's financial portion of the project. With that, the city essentially pays for the entire project. And then through assessments that are paid over time, we get reimbursed from the residents. So that's what we're kind of finalizing tonight is the bids and the financing. We will continue to educate residents as we, as we go forward. The assessments obviously are not finalized at this time, there's still a lot of discussion that's going to be around that. And then, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there's like a final public hearing at the end.
Yeah, so, so where we're at tonight is basically, the decision before the council is based on the information you have. And now you have the bids, you know who the contractor is, you can see how the project came in compared to the estimates. Is the project going to move forward? If it moves forward, we would move into construction this summer. When we're close to finalizing construction, we'll have a better idea of the final cost of the project. At that time, we'll be advertising for a final assessment hearing. And the final assessment hearing will be your chance then to come, once we know the, the cost of the project. You'll get a notice of what the assessable portion is to your property. And then you'll have a chance to come back and address the council and, and give them feedback on how to move forward or things to consider as they approve that final assessment for the property. So you'll have another chance to address the council and give public feedback before that number is finalized. And that will, that will include the assessable portion of the project, the term, how long are you going to allow the assessments to, to go out? The interest rate that's being charged, all those things will be laid out for you towards the end of the summer, early fall. And you'll get a chance to give them your opinion on that.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. All right, 7B2A, accept the pre-sale report for the 2021 Street Project.
Okay, so I do have Todd Hagan, our financial advisor with Ellers, on the, on Zoom to answer, or to review the pre-sale report for the 2021 Street Project. As I'm, I already kind of went over the, the summary of the project, again, the cost. We are thinking now, will be about 1,250,000. So what we are proposing as far as how we're going to finance the project, the streets would be bonded for. The city would have about 565,000 in that cost, assessments would be 322. The water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure, we are Todd Hagan from Ellers and our financial advisor with ABDO. We did review the health of these accounts, and we are recommending that we pay this, the costs out of our enterprise funds entirely. So how that would work is the city would pay the total cost, that includes the city costs. And then the assessments would then, the utility assessments would then get reimbursed in those accounts over, over the payments. The assessment payments over time from the residents. And then we are also recommending that we pay for the parking lot with cash, which is 17,281.
The parking lot or about the park?
On Third Street, yep. So with that, we're proposing the 17,000 for the parking lot out of cash. 312,000 about, out of the enterprise funds. And then we're, we are proposing to bond the rest, which is 930,000 to cover the street portion. And then Todd, I'll let you kind of review the report and then the state credit enhancement option.
Yep, thank you, Todd from Ellers, can everybody hear me okay? Yep.
Yes.
Great, yeah, so pre-sale report again, similar to the fire station we did, it's kind of a kickoff for the bond issuance. That, that the bids would, the bids would come in on the bonds on April 26th then, so we're not selling bonds tonight. We're just getting it set up to go out for public bidding, like we did with the fire station. So tonight, we've got a couple resolutions for the council to consider. Once the, basically have Ellers and associates go out for those bids and come back on that day. And then the other one would be application for straight, state credit enhancement. So like Maggie had said, the parking lot, we pulled that out with cash. Basically because, because that will not qualify for a state guarantee. We're, with Dave's help, this is going to be, as far as in the state's eyes, this is a utility project. So the streets are incidental to, to the utilities, so they got to be dug up to get to the utilities, then we can get the state guarantee. You guys have a double A credit rating with Standard and Poor's, we can get a triple A on it. So we can sell these with a double A underlying rating of the city and a triple A, which is really the state of Minnesota's rating. So that'll give you the, I would think, the lowest possible interest rate we can, we can get for the city for a market rate bond. So, so with a little cash, you know, just for the, for the parking lot, I think it's a good trade-off. Maggie had also talked about that, you know, with Steve's help with the long-term financial plan. We did last week, do a lot of discussions with Maggie and Dave and Steve. And really came up with, you know, being able to use cash then from the water and sanitary sewer fund, enterprise fund, and not have to bond for that because there's lots of cash in there. And so we're really, like Maggie had said, we're just financing the street portion of this. And really, the street special assessments are going to be paying for this bond. The other assessments will go back into the enterprise funds, which is fine. This is going to be a 15-year bond, and, and so it, it'll be bank. And, and so, it, it'll be bank-qualified. Should, should give us some really, really low interest rates. Rates have ticked up a little bit. They're bouncing around some. There's a 30-year bond buyer graph I have attached to the pre-sale report. You can see, if you look at the far right on that, even though we're at the bottom of the historical low there, you can see it's sort of bouncing back up a little bit. So, it's good to get these things sold. And I don't think it'll go up very much higher than that. We're not seeing rates gonna be spiking up anytime soon. I think it's just kinda, gonna be going back and forth a little bit, kind of just depending on supply and demand here. So, I think those are some of the highlights. And we're gonna get this bond rated like I talked about. You know, we, we probably see some kind of discount from Standard and Poor's a little bit on that since we just, you know, issued those fire station bonds in January, February. But, you know, Steve presented the audit, you know, got a new audit now for 2020. So, we'll be presenting that during the rating call. So, we'll hope to see if we can get some money off on that. But they do have to take a look at how you guys panned out then in, in 2020. So, we may or may, may or may not be able to, to get any kind of discount on that. We'll see. Other than that, we'll use your same bond attorney, paying agent, bond trust services in our office. Same rating agency on that. You know, I'll come back on April 26th, show you what we've got for, for bids. It's a good time to get out there and do this. And congratulations on getting 10, 10 bids back on the construction and how low that came in too. So, you guys are hitting this at a really good, really good point. If you have to do projects and borrow money, I think you're, I think you're, you've got great timing here. So, I know it's by chance, but I don't know, I'd take the credit if I could, if I were you.
Okay, any questions for Todd on the pre-sale report? Now, do we need to, Maggie, do we need to make a motion to accept this report? Or is this just more part of the FYI for these next two resolutions?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, you do not have to make a motion.
All right. Then we'll get, we'll move on to the sale of the resolution, or the sale of the Series 2021 bonds. Authorizing the sale, Maggie, is there anything, or Todd, either of you want to add to this before we move on?
Nope, that first resolution just authorizes Ellers to proceed with packaging up the bond issue and coming back with the bids on April 26th. And the second one is to enter into that credit enhancement agreement, which is that state guarantee. Where we'll be getting the triple A S and P rating because of that.
Perfect, then I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 3-22-21-13, authorizing the sale of Series 2021 B bonds.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Now, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 3.22.21.14, authorizing entering into credit enhancement program agreement.
I'll move that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Perfect, Todd, thank you very much. I appreciate all your work on this.
Yep, thanks again for the business. I appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, we'll, we'll talk soon then.
Yep, bye-bye.
Thanks.
All right. 7C1 Wheel Loader Purchase, Public Works.
Is everybody fine with me over here in my corner? Should I get up?
What you dancing?
I'm not gonna ask the mayor, I'll just, I'll just ask everybody. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A motion approving the purchase of a new wheel loader with recommended attachments. At the March 8th, 2021 City Council Workshop Meeting, city staff presented a variety of information on why the Mayor Public Works Department would benefit from having a wheel loader as part of their current operations. Public Works staff visited a few different municipalities to review their loader size and to see how they utilize this type of machine within their departments. Staff also demoed different loaders and tested them on different tasks within the city to help determine which machine would be the best fit for the department. This piece of equipment has been a part of the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan for the past several years and is also part of the long-term financial plan. Staff is proposing the purchase of a new Case 621G wheel loader with attachments in the amount of 180, 211,000. Staff received quotes from Titan Machinery on a Case loader, and Ardeo Equipment on a John Deere loader, and Ziegler Machinery on a Cat loader. The 621G is the largest machine and is also the most cost-effective. This piece of equipment is the perfect size for accomplishing all the different tasks that the Public Works staff is going to use, utilize it for. And on the diagram, cost comparisons between the loader bucket, snowplow pusher, the pallet forks, work platform, total costs. The John Deere and the Case are very close. However, the, the Case is quite a bit bigger, has the more horsepower and more breakout force tipping load. Kind of all the main statistics you look at when you're looking for a loader. All public, Carver County Public Works operations utilize this piece of equipment within their Public Works departments for different, for a variety of different tasks. The main tasks that the city of Mayor Public Works Department is gonna use this machine for include downtown snow removal, compost site operations, and loading and hauling material. Staff will be able to push and pile snow from downtown area in record time, even with limited staff. The Public Works Department will be able to start producing higher-quality compost and operate the entire site much more efficiently without having to add additional man-time or equipment. Manpower overtime. Loading and hauling material is gonna be much faster and safer, given the weight, the breakout force, bucket size, and visibility when you're operating the machine. This machine is built for these tasks. Public Works staff is gonna be able to do a greater amount of work with this machine. This will improve efficiency, cut down on overtime costs, and also improve safety. One Public Works employee is gonna be able to accomplish more within an hour than what two Public Works employees can accomplish with two skid loaders within one hour. This is gonna be a huge benefit, given Mayor has a small Public Works staff. The city will see a greater amount of production, even with having a small crew. It is possible that the city will be, be able to sell and/or trade other snow-removal equipment in the near future if it is determined that is no longer needed. Currently, we're, we have the equipment to operate without the payloader. However, it'd be a huge benefit to have the payloader. Overall, the Mayor Public Works Department has done their homework and is recommending the city purchase this piece of equipment for the department to improve production, safety, and overall efficiency. If the Public Works staff did not see an absolute need or a large benefit in purchasing this machine, then it would not be getting proposed. After demoing and seeing other, how other municipalities use this piece of equipment, it is hard to put into words the amount of work it can actually do. This piece of equipment is the last piece of the puzzle needed for the Public Works Department until the city grows quite significantly. And at the workshop meeting, it was asked to provide kind of the snow removal expenses and costs over the past few years. And yeah, the last three, four year, five years have been quite doozies. And we are proposing to fund this piece of equipment. We have $75,000 budgeted this year. The remaining would come from the 435 fund. Maggie can touch base more on that, she knows more about that. We do get a compost site grant of a certain amount, and then the Highway 25 reimbursement as well.
Yeah, and I can go into a little bit more. So, with the transfer that we approved under the consent agenda, that included 50,000 into the, into this account that we would use towards this equipment. And then also existing, an existing 55,211 from that account as well. And we did, as Kyle mentioned, we did levy 75,000 within the operating budget for this piece of equipment as well. And then, just to answer the question for state reimbursement, I, I know that's come up in the past. So, what we do is, I think we currently ask the state for $180 per hour, per piece of equipment. And so, what we can do with this equipment is we can propose a higher, higher-cost reimbursement to, to then maybe offset some of the costs of, you know, to pay for some of this equipment. So, we could, they didn't give me a dollar amount, but we can put in our proposal a certain dollar amount that we think would be appropriate. For example, we could propose $220 per hour for this equipment, and we would get reimbursed more if the state approves for that dollar amount. Again, we also do get a grant from the county for about $4,500. If we're using this equipment for compost, then we would be able to reimburse hours that we use this equipment out of the compost site. So, we can, that would qualify as well.
Any other questions for Kyle or Maggie? And Kyle, you talk about Carver County uses these quite a bit. Is there any way to talk to any of the other municipalities or Carver County? If, if so many are using them, to try to get some sort of a price break on these versus every community just buying one? Have we looked into that at all?
As far as...
Trying to buy, you know, if, if, if the county knew, you know, Mayor was buying one Hamburgi, is buying one Watertown's buying that, we can get three of them at a big, a bigger discount? Have we done anything like that? Have we even looked into it?
Not in the past. It's kind of tough because all, all cities or most municipalities and like Carver County, they're kind of in their own rotation of equipment type thing. So, it's like, and they all vary. And some of this equipment too, you hold on for, like, we'll probably have this piece of equipment for 15, 20 years. So, it's kind of, I mean, if it lines up, I would say it might be able to work, but... That's kind of pointed the state bid too.
Like, like, take Chan, Chan or Chaska. I mean, would you say they have three, four, or five of them?
No, I know Bell Plain has two of them. I think Hutchinson has three of them. And I, I think, I don't know, and then with the state bid, it is a set standard. And I don't know if they would be able to offer a discount below the state bid.
That might be the best bid as it is.
Yes.
Based on that, okay.
Yes.
All right. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the purchase of the Titan 621G with the recommended accessories for the amount of 180,211. And for the sake of conversation, I'll make a motion to approve the Case 621 with the accessories for 180,211.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? So, and I know we've talked about this quite a bit in Public Works. This has been a conversation for the last three years that this piece of equipment would be utilized. We purchased a, a truck, a plow truck, three years ago with the intent that about three years later would be about the time now to add on this piece of equipment. So, we're, we've lined up pretty well with that timeline. I do have some questions on some of the state financing and trying, I'd still like to, and I know we've done some of this, but I'd still like to work with them and see what we can do. I feel the state should contribute to some of this piece of equipment, which is gonna save them money. So, right now, we're charging $180 an hour using a piece of equipment like this. When that goes away next year with Widmer, without this, we go down to a skid steer, which is gonna add hours onto theirs, add $180. We're gonna, instead of 10 hours, we're gonna be at 40 hours. You know, so now, we're gonna save them money by buying this equipment. I feel that there should be something that they can do to help with that. I'd like to still work with them. Like, I've talked to Kyle, even if we could go to the state and say, hey, you know what? Here's the amount of money, you know, for the last 10 years we've been spent, that you guys have been spending. You contribute 50,000 or 75,000, and we'll plow Highway 25, no charge for 10 years or 15 years. You know, if we could do something like that, I, I think we should look deeper into that. I know you've had some conversations, but I, I just feel, this is benefiting them also. Second thought I have on this, I do want to make sure we have some of the capabilities we're talking about. When you talk about compost and use it at the site, I want to make sure we're really using it then at that site. And how long will it take to get compost? And let the residents start using some of that compost to really get some of the benefits. So, I'm gonna wanna, I'm gonna wanna stay tied pretty tight to that also. You know, at times, I know we talk about doing certain things, and then that kind of just falls off. But I do think it's a, it's a great piece of equipment. I think we can use it a lot. I know for a fact, I happened to be in New Germany a couple months ago. They were using one to pull down their Christmas decorations with the, with the person lift. And it, it really, it was, it worked great, but... So, that's for me. I know I'm gonna wanna continue to monitor some of that, but I'd love to see if the state, or like Maggie says, maybe we just charge them more then. And it goes up to 300 bucks an hour, whatever it may be, to compensate for some of that. But, you know, being fair and ethical, obviously, but...
We could reach out to other communities too and see. I know there's other communities get reimbursed through the state. So, we could work, reach out to them and see what they're charging for each of their pieces of equipment. Just to make sure we're all kind of on the same line, not that we're undercharging by a lot, you know.
Yeah, right.
Or maybe we're overcharging, it's tough to tell, so...
I, I suspect we're not overcharging if they're paying it without...
Yeah, they're paying it without question, so... Right, we got, we got questioned a couple of years ago, but we were kind of, we were overcharging them, so...
But they still paid it. Interesting on that dollar amount, how that jumped up so high in the last couple of years on how much... Still a little confused by some of those numbers. But the state was reimbursing us in, I mean, just from 2027.
2017 through 2019, that was overcharging. We were kind of charging them for all the snow removal off of Highway 25. And then, then they kind of caught on, and they were like, whoa, 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 no, no, no. You know, and then, so we backed off. And then, 2020 is kind of more representation of just loading. We get reimbursed just for the loading, not the hauling, but the loading. So, it's very, they...
All right, enough on that.
Yep.
Well, I'm not opposed to purchase of the piece of equipment. Looks like Maggie's got all the financing in place. But one thing I learned from elected leaders is with the small staff, Maggie's gonna have to be able to assign some creative staffing times and changes. I know Kyle mentioned that this one enabled, like, if someone got done sooner, they could hop on the trail, Trail Cat or whatever and do the trails. But there's been times in the past with you and Widmer working the streets that, you know, at 7:30, they still weren't plowed, and people were having trouble getting out of town. You have a two-day snow, you know, it, you guys get backlogged and you're working long hours. So, Maggie's gonna have to come up with a plan, like, Kyle, you're on for the first eight hours, you go home. And then, the next guy, some creativity. And I think this piece of machine will allow that to happen now.
Yeah, I think the, the big piece here is, one, we're taking on snow removal for the first time this fall by, in our department. With that, we're also reviewing our snow and ice removal policy that will, I think, be beneficial as, as it will go into more detail about how we're gonna be managing the streets, the priority. We're actually gonna create a map as well that shows the priorities, which streets are priorities as routes. And so, I think, again, that'll come to you for review. And we will ask for recommendations as well as far as...
But I think that's a good point to add into that policy. We just started reviewing that policy at the last Public Works meeting to get some...
Yeah, it does include some, some hour information as well, so...
I think overall, we're gonna see an improvement on snow removal just because historically, we've waited till the snow event's over before the contractor comes in. Now, we'll be able to get through and do some first plows and not curb, not curb to curb, but at least get some of the roads open, especially on those three, you know, two-day snows. But we don't have a lot of them, and we have some historic, you know, we, we can manage through some of that, but...
You gotta be very careful not to take work away from the contractor.
Yeah, it was...
It's tough to keep your hands off it, but...
So, things will change now when, when we do it, and what hours they can get out there and get working and... Any other questions, comments, discussion? We have a motion, a second, to purchase the machinery. Any further discussion? All right, with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I forgot one other question. Kyle, is that an off-the-shelf item or is this, we don't have to get this built and it's a six-month period? Is it fairly, really quick term?
Might have to wait a little bit on the plow. It's a little backed up, but we should have it plenty of time for fall, he said. And the machine itself, I think, is thirty to sixty days out. So they got orders in and so they'll just piggyback onto one of them. So we should have it this summer, hopefully, because, yeah, we'll definitely utilize it this summer, so.
Perfect.
Will, will they give you a loan or till then, or?
If I sweet talk them, I might be able to. They did steal my PowerPoint from the last work session. They were pretty impressed by it. So they're going to, they gave it to their municipalities, guys, so.
They owe you.
They owe me, yeah, exactly, so.
All right, Maggie, that'll take us to seven D one, epoxy flooring fire station project.
Okay, so I'll do a little review. I also have chief one and chief two here as well for these items. What I wanted to bring up too is I do have a financial breakdown of kind of where we're at currently as far as, let's see if I can bring this out a little. Purchases and what we've approved already in the past. I'm going to see if I can download this. Do, make it better. I don't think this will change it. Okay, as far as the epoxy flooring, so in December, the city council, no, that didn't change anything, reviewed the bid for the fire station project. As you know, the low bid came in and was approved for BCI construction. At that meeting, the council reviewed the bids as well for the project alternatives. The epoxy flooring was not originally an alternate. And so at that meeting, there was discussion as far as how to move forward with the epoxy floor option. So at that meeting, we, the architect, there was a quote that was provided for the bays and, and so, and then the, okay, let's see. So there were discussion items on the carpet and the alternate three was the carpet. So the council moved to eliminate the epoxy in the, in the offices and then in the meeting room and to add carpet. And so the motion that was made was to do that, but not to exceed ten thousand dollars. So then that came in.
You made the decision to remove it from the bid and put it as an alternate.
What?
So it wasn't in the original, it was in, so it was moved to be an alternate, correct?
Right.
Who deci- who decided that? That it was, at, at some point, you just, the fire department had decided that they were going to leave the floors just concrete, correct? And it was moved into alternate.
Right, so the original, the original bid included everything as sealed concrete.
Right.
And.
So the council didn't make that decision. That was something the fire department decided to do.
To have sealed concrete?
Right, or to not to have carpet.
Exactly.
Okay. I just, I think you said that the council decided not to have carpet, that's.
I'm sorry. So the council at the December meeting after the bids were done had a.
The fire department decided that carpet wasn't important to them at that point.
Right, in the original bid, in the original bid, it, everything was sealed concrete. And so the alternate that was in the bidding process was to add carpet to the offices and the meeting room. So that, at the December meeting, the council decided that they would allow, they moved to allow to add the carpet, but not to exceed ten thousand dollars. So when that was researched further, that price eventually was confirmed to be seven thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars. The epoxy portion was not an alternate, but was discussed at the December meeting, as I mentioned. And the council, based on going back and forth with the alter, with the architect and with a, with an estimate that was provided at that meeting, decided to, to move to allow for the epoxy flooring to move forward, but not to exceed four, forty-one thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. So since then, we did, I did put in a change order request with the BCI construction and the, so the architect put together a spec sheet, gave it to BCI and they solicited a quote to what they thought it would be for the, everything that's not carpet. The bay, so it would be the bays, the storage locker areas and all the other, the hallway and the additional rooms that were originally sealed concrete. So that bid that came back was, came in at fifty-six thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars. So with that, because it is over the amount that the council approved in December, we do need to have a discussion as to whether to move forward with the epoxy flooring at the new quoted amount. I think, again, based on the discussion that went back and forth in December, that was based on the architect's guess as to what he thought it would be, but also a quote that was provided, I believe, just for the bays and the gear locker area. So it didn't include the hallway, like, when the council was having that discussion originally. So this includes the entire station besides everything that's carpet. So that is why it's here tonight. We need to discuss how to move forward with, with the epoxy flooring.
That's stuff we've already approved. So we didn't add anything in here that we're wanting epoxy on. This has all been approved at council, correct?
Yeah, the, the estimate. Yeah, the estimate just came in
Okay.
higher and.
I just want to confirm that. So the estimates, we thought the epoxy floor is going to cost forty-one thousand and one, now we're up to fifty-six.
Right. So with that.
Savings on the carpet?
So there is savings on the carpet.
How did that come about? Is this a lower grade carpet that was going to be installed or is it the same carpet that was going to be installed?
I don't think we.
It's a lower bid, or a lower final bid than what the architect was estimating.
Same quality of carpet?
Yeah.
So with that, if, for financial reasons, I would suggest, be- because the carpet did come in lower, we could, I guess, compensate the two thousand six hundred thirteen from that savings and then use the remainder out of contingencies. That's an option. I'm, I'm open to any other questions about this, but that's kind of my suggestion. I just wanted to give you a little overview too. I was asked to provide kind of more of a financial breakdown of where we're at right now with what we've paid so far, how, how it's, what the funding source will be, what hasn't been approved yet, what has.
I'm definitely concerned some of that. So my computer just froze up. Can you go to your narrative real quick?
Mm-hmm.
What, did you have it in there, suggestion how, where that extra money comes from?
In my narrative, I did, in my memo.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I said, because we did see a savings in the carpet, we would just pull that two thousand six hundred thirteen from there and then the remainder out of the contingency fund.
Out of that eighty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
What are we up to for a total cost of the fire station now, before the stuff, the other stuff that we're going to add tonight? Three point six?
Three point six, yep, with, and that's including the land.
Three years of our operating budget, probably a little over. About a million dollars a year is our operating budget, roughly?
Say that again?
Operating budget for the city is about what? About a million dollars?
Over that.
Yeah, okay. I am ashamed of our fire administration, the way that this has been designed. This is a shell game.
With that, Maggie, how, out of the eighty thousand, we haven't used any of that contingency money yet. None of that's been earmarked?
Mm-mm.
I need, I need to go back so I can see the narrative. I, I don't need to know numbers to ask for a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your froze.
Oh, apologies. Okay.
It's, she's got it now, thank you. So we need, I'll look for a motion to increase the epoxy by fifteen thousand three hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents for a grand total of fifty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-seven to epoxy the pre-approved areas.
Would that be right if we're taking the two thousand?
Yeah, the total would be fifteen thousand. It's, it's essentially out of the same fire station fund, it's just in different line items.
Got it.
Yeah, so I guess I'll look for a motion to do the epoxy flooring for the pre-approved rooms at fifty-six thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars.
I'm moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I, I agree, uh, uh, some of these other discussions we'll have further down, but I was partly where I wanted Maggie to kind of start keeping track of where we're at on things. I'm, I'm in favor of this just because of the estimates, you know, they just came in different. I don't feel that anything, the initial estimates we got, we, we got on the fly, I think, and, and they just came in a little bit higher. It, it's too bad. Most of the things we've estimated have come in lower, so that's a good sign, so that's all I have to say on this one. Any other comments? Chad, do you have anything you want to add? No?
No.
All right. Any other comments with that? Well, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries three one. All right, seven D two generator for the fire station project.
All right, this is also a change order request with the generator. This did come at, up at the December twenty-first special city council meeting when we were reviewing bids. So at that meeting, the city council did table the discussion of the generator to, to bring it back at a future date. We did discuss it again on January twenty-fifth at the workshop, just kind of providing additional information. Kind of getting some ideas as far as what we think it would cost. As far as estimates, we did receive two estimates. One was for a one hundred kilowatt generator at forty thousand, about forty thousand, and then a one hundred and fifty kilowatt, which was forty, a little over forty-five thousand. Just to go over that, those quotes did not include the gas connection, the concrete slab or the fence. So with the change order that was, we proposed with BCI construction to price out the generator, the contractor did reach out to the subcontractors, it's work, they're working with, and that is included, that information is included in your packet. So the change order request would include the purchase and installation of a one hundred thirty kilowatt generator. It would include a fence. That, that's a recommendation from the architect. It's not a necessity at this time. It includes a concrete pad and the gas connection for seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three thousand. Again, the quotes that were given in January, that did not include the additional components and accessories that were asked for by the architect when he, when they put the specs, spec sheet together. So at this time, the city council has not approved the generator as part of the fire station project. It's not budgeted for within the overall project cost. And so the council would need to discuss moving forward with the generator as part of the project or wait until, or wait and do this as a separate part of the project. Again, the city can wait on the fence if it, if we feel that that's necessary. The fence is recommended, I think the architect just generally has, the fence is included. One reason he's, they mentioned was just protection and against vandalism. So if the council decides to move forward with this change order, it would be seventy-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. And the way that we would finance that would have, it would be out of the fire department capital fund. That fund currently sits at about four hundred ninety-three thousand of unreserved fund balance. With that, I am, if this is approved tonight, I, I am working on the long-term plan, so I would kind of restructure with the fire chief goals for, for the next five, six years with that, with that fund, so.
Which side of the building did we say this, the generator, go on?
What is that fence made out of?
It's steel.
Holy crap. It's more than a concrete pad.
And a steel. That's nuts, isn't it?
And we can't, if, if we go this route, we can't do any of it ourselves? Am I understanding that correctly?
Oh, uh, yeah, we would. If we don't accept the change order, this would have to be a separate, like, we, it would be a separate separation, but if we did do it, the nice thing about having it included in the, in, I'm just saying, the pro in the project is that it would be covered under the project warranty. But again, this is what it would cost if we did bring it into the project with BCI.
If we use the architect.
Right.
Because like, the, the bits we saw in, I don't know, the sheet above.
Right.
I think that the chief brought them in for the hundred and fifty KW. It had all the bells and whistles and it was, it was five grand less than what the architect brought.
Yeah, but a, again, that's in, if you look at this spec, or I can give you, send you the spec sheet. It did include some things that the architect was recommending that the, when we got those other estimates.
It looked apple, apples. It had the battery warmer, the, the transfer switch, the, it had everything except a marked up price. To me, it looked like it, but I don't know, I didn't see the paper, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's the.
I don't know, I'd have to ask the.
And I, and I'm, yeah, and it was, AME provided the quotes. They also are the subcontractor for this, the approved subcontractor for the fire station project as well under BCI. Again, I, I'm not an expert in generators, but that was what was, again, AME went off the spec sheet that the architect put together.
No doubt we need a generator. There's no question or if and or but about that. It's just, that's a big jump.
Was this generator ever within the first proposal for the fire station? The first, that was approved by the council? Was that, was that on there or no?
I don't think it was ever part of the, never part of the bid.
Yeah, so when, when Rotten gave us the proposal, you know, for, when we kind of gave him everything, he had stuffed line items. He had a line item for a generator for, I want to say it's at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We, we knew we could get a generator for far less than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And felt that, you know, let's just do this after the fact. We know we can get a lot cheaper to butt costs to save the city some money on that.
I remember that answer. I don't remember that part being on that answer, but thank you. So, so was it the fire, the committee that decided to not put it, to put that on as a, okay?
It was none of our, it was none of our intent to not have a. It was never, it was none of our intent to not have a generator, it was an intent to save money for it.
So realistically, are we at half price of what it was originally then?
Well, that's the, that's the, and I apologize, I was asked to get the.
But that was one other, so we got the seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-three here, but we also do have some stuff that's already included in the construction of the building to wire for some, so I need to know what that number is.
I asked about that, and very minimal.
Like, five grand?
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Oh, that, that minimal.
So this is almost half of the original quote.
And that's not what I originally was told.
Cause I did, I asked, I mean, is the electrician on the job, you know, what, what is in it now, just getting it set up to a point?
Yep, yep.
More or less some conduit.
Oh, I thought there was quite a bit more, I thought I had heard like fifty grand according to Corey, Maggie, you need to check on that.
I will check on that.
You need to get, so I'm confused on the quotes, and I know your little note and, on the, uh, that the architect added components and accessories, explain, up above you talk about a hundred and twenty kilowatt generator, or a hundred, for forty thousand, a hundred and fifty for forty-five, how do we get a hundred and thirty for fifty-eight, or fifty-nine?
Right, I think it's.
What accessories are we talking about? Say that again?
A change order? Guys gonna make up some money, they have no money for that change order.
But if we have a quote for the hundred and, the hundred and fifty thousand for cheaper, why don't we just get that one?
In Adam's, the AME's bid, um, what the architect or engineer's spec, had a lot of other items that made it much more expensive than the specs that, um, AME originally provided of the test.
So the generators that we propose, that we estimated would, uh, be sufficient for the fire station, when we provided estimates at the January meeting, based on, um, AME, just that discussion, that's what those quotes were based off of, the architect, when we did the change order through BCI, just to incorporate it in the project, we wanted to see what it would cost to keep it within the project, knowing that AME was the designated, um, subcontractor, but they put together a different spec sheet, so they, the architect put together something that was different, wha- what their recommendation was, and based on their recommendation, this is what the cost is, based on the, like, if you, if you take out, so essentially you have to decide, are you gonna go with, are we gonna go with what the architect is recommending, and the cost of what the architect is recommending to support this building? Or are we going to not accept this change order, do it separate, and re, go off what's recommended by an outside company separate, like.
What's the recommendation coming to us?
The recommendation is, so, the recommendation is to consider keeping it within the project, that, so what I did was I reached out to the contractor, or the architect, to see what it would cost to incorporate it into the project. So with that, the BCI reached out to subcontractors to find, and they put together a spec sheet, what they thought would support the building based on their knowledge of putting together and designing this building, so this is what the cost came in at with, with their spec sheet. The other quotes were based off of if we decided not to incorporate this in the project, and just wait and do it separately, based on going with an outside company, not incorporating it in the project, that, that makes sense. Sorry.
If we waited, we have to make sure the gas line and electrical are hooked up to where, to the wall where we're gonna plug this thing in at.
Right, so, again, it does not include the gas connection that we would need for the generator.
Right.
The concrete pad, or the.
We don't know if the electrical's gonna be ran.
Well, that.
The conduit would be ran.
It's there, okay.
The only thing that isn't in the current specs, the way it is right now, is the gas line being ran.
And we're sure, we're sure that's, it's not?
Correct, yep, the gas connection wasn't ran for that, but the, the conduit for it was, is in the original specs of it. It's the way I understand it.
Let me see if I can rephrase this differently.
More or less, Adam's bid would be plus the gas connection and the concrete slab, so we'd be pretty well close to sixty-some thousand.
So I did put together what it would cost, base, like, adding everything to the previous quotes, and it would bring the hundred kilowatt generator to fifty-six thousand, and then the hundred fifty to sixty-one thousand. That's including the fence, the concrete pad, and gas connection that was quoted by BCI. So it is, it is about a fifteen, sixteen thousand dollar difference from the old quotes to this quote, um, if you included everything. The reason why I did it this way is because when we, again, when we had AME quote it, this is, again, he is going off his information as a, you know, as a contractor, the architect is the one who put this spec sheet together, um, based on their knowledge of the building, then gave it to AME to quote it, and so this is what that's based off of, so it's based off different information, I, I, that's what I'm thinking. But again, I'm, I, I don't want to speak for the fire department, I just want to make sure that we're getting something that will work for this project, and that, I want to be confident that it'll fit this building, I'm not about spending more money, but I just want to make sure we don't get to a point where, where it's not, we don't have everything we need, and.
Are we able to still do it ourselves, or?
Yeah, if you reject this change order, we would just need to do a little bit more research to make sure when this building is built, that it has everything we need to be able to do this project separately.
We still wouldn't have outside brass tacks numbers, but the seventy-eight thousand is what the contractors recommending it would take to get it done.
Within the project, right. But again, that's taking the architect's word, you know, that they put together a spec sheet that meets the requirements for this building, so, I mean, it's, yeah, again, we need to decide which route we want to go.
Are you able to, help, direction to the fire department?
Well, you know, I, I don't know, I, I mean, I have been involved in this, and what I would say is generally, when you're doing a project of this magnitude, I do think it makes some sense to incorporate it in the project, just from a management of the project, um, and, and getting it done at once. What I don't know, you know, if you have some separate quotes to go and do yourself, you still gotta make sure the site work is set up and to take the generator. The idea would be is you're gonna go up there, drop this generator on, and then hook it up when you're done, so, wherever those costs are, you gotta make sure that it's accounted for, whether you're buying it, the generator, or have somebody else put it in there, or waiting, uh, or we're doing this part of the project, I, I just don't know enough about it, uh, to give you good advice.
What are you gonna, what would we pay somebody to manage that, are you gonna spend more on, if we go that route versus just do it with this contractor?
I mean, I would assume that the whole, you know, like, the inspection of this whole project would be, we'd have to kind of get a separate inspection.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question would be is, you know, then, yeah, you'll, you'll need a separate permit for it, I would guess, if you fall under your building permit, you have to go get a permit, the building inspector would have to inspect it, um, I, yeah, I mean, there, there's costs associated with that.
Fire department have current money within their budget somewhere to absorb these costs?
Yeah, I, I think there was, cause it's not out of the contingency effect.
No, it would be separate, uh, it would be outside of the project, and it would be out of their capital fund.
If we go with building it now?
I think either way, it would be out of the.
Make a motion that we install the generator that's recommended by the architect or whoever, that the funds will be covered out of the fire department's budget.
Do we still want to pay that much for the fence?
Yep.
That's the part that's just flooring, is it concrete?
Yep, we have a motion, just correct me if I'm wrong, it's a motion to accept the change order?
Yes, and then with the attachment of, the funds will come out of the fire department's.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
It's a shell game, sometimes you lose, it's just gonna cost us more money now.
I will second the motion for discussion. Any further discussion?
I, I, I just think that's a lot of money for the fence, for a small fence.
We're on the fence about the fence.
Yeah, you know, and I don't like the fact that, that the generator, they marked up the price of the generator, but I do like the fact that it would all be done at once.
I like that fact too, it'll be clean, it'll be done and neat.
I think there's some advantage to that, um, I don't think we need a fence, I don't see a need for this, unless we need it in that area.
How many guys feel?
We have a, we have a generator out here, we don't have fenced, I think we need to get some poles if necessary, so we don't back into it, but.
Isn't there pylons around it?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a fence, that's my point, we'd have to put something in.
Right.
At, at the other one, but I don't see a need for a fence, we don't, uh, uh, unless I'm missing something. So I think that we could, I, I, I wouldn't be in favor of, but, I'm still confused on what's installed at the fire, I've heard huge differences on what I've heard before, that we're up to about, we had about forty or fifty thousand dollars worth of work in there, now we're here at twenty-five hundred. That's, Maggie, you need to tie off with, with Corey. Yeah.
I can't imagine it's fifty grand to run a conduit and a gas line to.
We had that conversation with Corey at the beginning, when it was a hundred and thirty or forty thousand for this, and I questioned, well, how come it's so cheap? And he said, no, there's a lot of work that's already been done, so, but anyways, um, I don't agree, I don't want to put the fence in.
So, we'll make a motion to approve this minus the fence?
We have a motion, a second already.
Oh, sorry.
To approve the change order. You can, if the person want, do we have to reject it, or can he amend it, longest person who seconded it is agreement?
You can amend it.
So you can amend it, you can, uh, voice an amendment if you'd like.
The same motion minus the fence, we'll.
Okay, accept the change order without the fence, uh, who seconded that?
You did.
I did. Rare I do, um, and yes, I will accept that, I will second that amendment to the motion, all right, any further discussion on that?
Last question, we're sure the hundred and thirty KW is enough, this is the, this is from the architect, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? With that, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries four, zero. Seventy-three desks, tables, chairs.
Okay, so, um, I might have the fire, the chief one and chief two help me, help me with this one, um. Essentially, uh, at this time, the fire department is proposing, um, the purchase of desks, tables, and chairs for the fire station in the amount of eighteen thousand eighteen dollars, that includes, um, furnishings of five desks and five hutches, and two credenzas within the, uh, office spaces, and then within the meeting area, it would be fifty-two stackable chairs and twenty-seven training tables, I did include pictures, um, as well of those items. So, as you know, the city council has approved a hundred fifty thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty-eight cents for FFNE. We've been working, um, or the fire department has been doing final pricing on FFNE items, this item, um, is over, puts us over our FFNE budget, um, hun, uh, ten thousand would be able to come out of the FFNE, but the remainder of the eight hundred eighteen, eight thousand eighteen, um, the fire department is proposing to take out of the grant fund, that fund is mostly, uh, funds that are provided to the fire department through the baseball club each year, that balance is currently about seventeen thousand dollars, so, if you want to add anything, Rod or Andy, um, that's, that's what the fire department is asking this evening, if they can do ten thousand out of FFNE and the eight thousand eighteen.
We sat with FFNE, is it done, we had a list that we approved, and we had an amount for not to exceed a hundred and fifty-four thousand, you've, it's spent, it's all?
It's not all spent, um, hold on, so this is kind of my, the yellowish-orange, that's what we've spent, um, so we have come in lower in some areas, um, that's the negative. The blue, that's included within the audiovisual part, we've only paid half of that right now. Fitness equipment's not in that, was taken out, and then the, uh, we did pay the direct exhaust filtration system, that came in last time we thought too, but we do have some other items that have current estimates that bring us over, we're still trying to finalize the, them, but.
I don't remember our FFNE being that many items.
Um. Yeah, these were the.
Those were all the ones, which ones, all?
Yeah, these were the, these were, this was the approved amounts, and then these were the dollar amounts in the categories that you approved, these other items were items that the fire department was considering after the fact to put into the FFNE.
Wait, wait, so we made a motion to approve FFNE for a certain dollar, for certain items that was on the list, and we said, whatever you want on those items, here's your amount, but not to add items in there.
I think, if I remember correctly, these items were in the list, they just didn't have dollar amounts next to them, they were in the.
Think or we know?
I'm certain.
Okay.
They were in the list, they just didn't have any numbers next to them.
I just don't remember it being that long of a list, seventeen items.
I can get you the, the spreadsheet that we used, um. I do know that there were some items, for sure, that were on there that, um, just didn't have a dollar estimate next to them.
Why is this coming to us?
Because.
It's before us today.
Um.
Exceeding the hundred and fifty thousand?
They are.
That we've approved?
Yep.
Potentially.
So, we are right now, hundred and, what was it, a hundred and forty, around a hundred and forty?
Well, this is, this is the total amount that's, that's been paid, or is reserved, cause that we've only paid, this has been approved, but we've only paid half, so this is the total amount we've spent.
So there's another twenty-four thousand, or twenty-five thousand, right, to, to that? From the audiovisual, the other half?
Yes, so that, the total is a hundred and sixteen spent.
Yep. But I believe with the other stuff that we're getting, I believe it's right around a hundred and forty thousand, somewhere in there. The tables and chairs, um, when we first went through the list, we had on that list, um, but then, there was, that's why some of those other items don't have things about it, we took things off because we, we wanted to, we wanted to cut that list, or you guys asked to, you know, get that list a little bit lower. So we kind of went through things of, maybe we didn't need it, um, one item that a former council member that was on the building committee said, take that off of there, why don't you use money out of the baseball fund that they have donated to get those items, and it would be like the tables and chairs. And so, we pulled those tables and chairs out of that, that was one thing we got, you know, to get that price lower, so now, with everything, we're about a hundred and forty, or, you know, we're below budget on our FFNE, um, we're asking to then, of part of that FFNE to get, you know, what's to that a hundred and fifty that was approved? We're asking to then, of part of that F F and E to get, you know, of, you know, what's to that a hundred and fifty that was approved? That ten thousand or whatever in change to cover the chairs. And then the balance of that, taking from that baseball account or whatever that they have donated money to the fire department for, to get the balance of it. If that, if that's understandable.
Did we approve that last year? Was that twenty-nine, twenty-twenty?
F F and E?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the December twenty-first meeting.
December twenty-first meeting, you said?
I think it may be.
Special city council meeting? This is where I'm, I'm having a problem with this one. I mean, again, into our conversation earlier, Megan, I still need to know where we're sitting now with the new added money we've added in to have that whole bottom line. We've added it, now a generator added more epoxy. But as far as I'm concerned, I approved a hundred fifty thousand for a certain F F and E. And there is here, there it is. It was all quoted. We had quotes on everything. Cut out some tables. Cut out some chairs. I, that's my view on it, because this is where I do think we are getting into that. What's next then coming back? And this is gone, and everything's just little by little, it's, it's creeping. Just because we had that eighty thousand contingencies doesn't mean we should be, I hope we don't spend any more of that. And so I have a big problem with this one. Mainly just because I think we, it can be filled in when it's needed. I don't see a need for five credenzas in three offices. I don't, I don't know who would spend that much time in there doing paperwork or doing office stuff. I don't. Fifty-some chairs for thirty people?
Well, for.
We got chairs.
We have trainings.
We got chairs we can use. I understand training. I understand people are gonna come in. I get that. I get it. But then they bring their own chair. I don't know, you know, I mean, we, we got chairs down at the fire station we can use, but that, that's just where I'm at. I, I, I don't, I'm not gonna vote to go over that F F and E from what we, what we approved. I'd say no. I'd say no. It's still money being used. It's still money to the bottom line of this project that's costing this community, which could be used for something else to benefit the community also. Defibrillator, whatever we need, you know, whatever's being used. So that's my, that's just my opinion on it, but, we have plenty of chairs here. We can bring a rack down there if we need to use some for the first couple of years, is my view on it. This is just getting out of hand. It's creeping. It's creeping, and it's still bottom line, bottom number. I was certainly on board with the epoxy. I get that. The quote came, I, I get where that came from, the generator, yes, we definitely have to do it, but some of this stuff. Did we find on that last meeting, Megan, what was on that list?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All those items?
Are they able to refurbish this list and use up to the ten thousand then at least?
Say that again?
Are they able to, you know, if we're not for this exact amount, are they still able to use that roughly ten thousand dollars in the P P or the, the, the equipment fund?
So I separated.
Or furniture? Sorry.
I separated the refrigerator, freezer, and oven in the hood, so that's added for.
Oh, okay, that's why the list got a little.
I'll make a motion that we allow the fire department to purchase up to one hundred fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents for F F and E.
We already have that motion, correct? I mean, that was done, that was done in December.
So what are, what are we looking for now then?
The over and above.
Okay, yeah.
Maggie, what's that fund designated for? The two, two, what did, what did you call it? The two twelve fire department grant fund.
Donation.
Did you say that two twelve?
Two twelve fire department grant fund. Isn't that donated from the?
It's the donations from.
Gambling funds strictly? Isn't it like more or less a designated fund for the fire department?
It's, um, donations that they get from.
Full tabs.
Yeah.
So, that's not a bad thing that we spend that money out of that, uh?
I think, I think that there's probably better things that we can spend that money on.
If I would ask the baseball club if they are okay spending their donations on, on that for the department, if they're okay with that, is that okay or?
No, because it's approved by the council. Spending all that money is approved by the council. If they decided they wanted to put it into a different fund for a different entity, they should, good.
What if they ask for donations specifically for that from the baseball club?
They could do that probably with new funds to earmark that maybe, I don't know, they could do that, but the funds that are in here right now are not earmarked for anything. They're earmarked for the fire department, and the council will decide where that money's gonna go with those funds.
I, I mean, I, I hope you see where, I, I understand you guys need chairs. I get it. I understand you need desks and furniture. It's just, it's just the creep on this and where this project's going and how it's getting there. And I've said from day one, we rushed through it. And now because we rushed through it, we had some of these things that are misses, and that's understandable. But, you know, so we missed some things. We, we, we're getting them taken care of, but that number that we had set, I'm set on that number.
Well, it was a.
Now, if, again, if someone wants to donate, here's some chairs. I'm all for it.
We're gonna keep the chairs from down to the current fire station, or what are you doing with those?
So it was a council member that is a part of the baseball club that said, you know, we'll, you know, you can, why don't we just use the donated money from the baseball club for that?
What are you doing with the fire, with the chairs and the desks, everything down at the fire station now?
Some of them will be utilized.
So you, you've got options until more funding's available? Or more donations? Earmarked for some cer, some things, sure.
Understood. I'll look for a motion to increase F F and E for tables, chairs, and desks for a total of eighteen thousand, eighteen dollars, which will exceed the pre-approved F F E of a hundred fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars. Someone wants to make that motion.
Using that eight thousand eighteen out of the gambling fund or not?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second if it's.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? And again, like I said, I'm just, I, I know we need this stuff, but I just, it, it's creeping. It's, it's, it just, it's not right to me. The bottom line isn't right. It's not right to the residents. If someone in the future wants to donate tables and chairs, I'm assuming that's acceptable to have it specific for that, but using existing funds that are there, I'm, I, I'm opposed to it, so. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm going with the theory that the, the baseball club donated it to the fire department at their discretion to make recommendations to the council, to approve it as a pass-through.
Right.
So, that's my feeling on that. The other feeling is that the fire department, they have a lot of trainings. Granted, right now, they might have thirty people, but, you know, two years down the road, maybe they can't get the same furniture to even match this stuff. I, I think the place should be equipped and presentable. I mean, it's gonna be a showplace for years, I would hope. We just saved seventy-five hundred dollars on a fence. I kept the creek down, so.
Don't mean to laugh, but.
Um, you know, I, maybe they can cut two tables out of it and make it around, around fifty.
And I agree. I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, we want it to look nice. We don't want a piecemeal.
But I agree with the baseball club comment too, though. If that's what they gave the money for, you know, for stuff that they can use, so be it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Aye. Motion fails, two-two. All right, seven D for fire department training containers.
Okay. Again, I'll let the chief one and chief two provide comments as well, um, if I miss anything. So in front of you is some information related to, um, dry freight containers. The fire department is looking to obtain three of these from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for free. They generally, um, according to, um, my research, they range from four thousand, five hundred to six thousand each, if they're new or refurbished. The city does have to, again, we'll get it for free. However, the city would have to pay for shipping. And that's estimated for all three to be about two thousand one hundred to two thousand four hundred in shipping costs to get them to.
One of them we have already, but just for two of them.
For two, okay. Okay.
Where are they coming from?
The D N R.
The location that they would be shipped from?
It's shipping to their location and then to us, the D N R.
Not something we can just go pick up.
I don't think we have the equipment.
We don't have flatbed for.
So with the, the fire department's looking to place them strategically on the new fire station site to create a training space. I'll show you that location image in a, in a little bit. It was reviewed by the city planner, the location and the concept, and, um, it is allowed, but it would have to be fenced in. So this would be an additional cost to setting up the training area. So this is something that some, some fire departments do. They set up and use these containers for training purposes to simulate real-life fire situations, especially, uh, tight, tight-space training. Which is, yeah, for learning mechanisms. So they are highly durable, weather-resistant steel. They're built to withstand harsh conditions, including fires. Um, the location that they're thinking, let me zoom out, is the, um, north corner of the lot. Again, it would have to be fenced in.
How much for fencing?
Uh, we haven't quoted that.
Is this something we could collaborate with another city on?
Another fire department?
Mm-hmm. As far as even just getting the cost down a little bit for the fencing and the, and the container shipping itself? Would that be beneficial or?
Um, I, I'm just guessing, but I think if we went that route, if we did collaborate with another fire department, it would have to be, there'd have to be some contract created and, um, just to.
I kind of thought about that too, as maybe we could do that, but then I think it starts getting messy on. We, we train with other stations and we do stuff with them and some do with us, and I think it just gets messy then from that aspect, but.
I just think of a beautiful fire station right now as big old rusty shipping containers.
That was one of my, that was one of my concerns. I drove up there and looked at the one. They're clean. They look, they don't have graffiti all over them. And then they are really back in the corner. They won't be up near the.
No, I like the idea.
We talked about, could we put them at the wastewater treatment plant at the compost site? But, um, there's convenience of fire hydrants up here.
Yeah.
Whereas, so that the water for the training, so. I, at first, I had a lot of concerns, but after I drove up to the site and looked at the one up there, and I, I like the idea of it.
I like the training.
I think it's great. I would like to find out the fencing and what that's gonna cost before we commit to this, but I can't imagine it's gonna be.
Well, good lord.
Can we consider a variance for the fence?
You could. I, I don't know if it always looks good to, for a city to request variance to its own code.
You can have a burn room in here too installed? You can have a burn room installed eventually?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, I don't know, she's show kind of a little bit of the fact of things. And it would be, not like we would put a, a gas, you know, per se burner in it. It would just more or less be a, a, a ones I've seen and looked at and utilized. They more or less just have a, you know, a box burnt, you know, and then they just use pallets or wood or whatever inside of it to, to use, so.
I like the idea.
I'm all for the idea. I still don't think we have all the information now, and I don't know how we make a decision.
Yeah, and originally, yeah, this was, I wanted this, I wanted to get it in front of council for more of a concept discussion, just to see if this is something we want to move forward with getting pricing. I did consider putting it on the workshop, but with the, what else we have on the agenda tonight, I.
I like the idea of it.
Just wanted to get, um, more of an idea of moving forward with getting.
Fence cost, I think, yeah. Seventeen hundred bucks isn't bad to get it here.
It seems like you can, the way they're set up. It seems like you can, yeah.
If it's built on the property line, I couldn't tell you. We would have to research if it's on the property line. Um, then you can tie into it, but otherwise you would have to do your own enclosure if it's not on the property line.
Chain link fence, I can't imagine it's gonna be.
And then I'd probably want it to match up with Public Works with the slats in it, you know.
Yep.
I like the idea of the concept of it. I'm for it.
And then I like the fact that, you know, if it is fenced in, you could actually have residents come and watch a training and stand outside the fence too. That would be actually great.
They've done other training in the industrial park with, uh, bus crashes and.
Oh, yep, yep, yep.
They've had people come in, so on. Yep, absolutely. All right, anything more you need on that, Megan? You'll get, okay.
Um, yeah, so.
Do we have to table?
I mean, so is there, I guess I'm looking probably for a consensus to move forward with getting pricing on.
Oh, I think a pricing, yeah, that doesn't, may as well.
Okay.
All right. I'll work your council for this. Larry, anything to report on?
No, there's a, uh, community ad meeting, Watertown mayor next month. That I'll be attending.
Perfect. Uh, thanks, Rod and Andy.
Thank you, guys.
Shannon, anything to report on?
Uh, park board discussed more, uh, different kinds of signs. Haven't come to a consensus or price yet on any of that. Um, discussed the splash pad. Didn't really move too forward on that either. Um, discussed, uh, mayor days, and, uh, that's about it.
Can I ask a question from the park board? You guys, it's, the, the box is installed, the two ramps, the half pipes out at the park. And there's a, a, the old grind box they took out. You know what the grind box is, right?
Hmm.
So on the new one, is there gonna be a, um, like a, a, I can't, yeah.
Uh, I'll have to ask, cause.
There's not one now, and so it's like for skaters, it's, it's basically.
Oh, yeah, that ain't gonna work.
A useless box. We paid a lot of money for it.
Right.
So I can't believe that a skate design company would, would design that without that metal grind edge.
Right.
The old one had one and the skaters loved it.
Take a look at it.
Take it off.
Bring it back to park board.
Yeah, no kidding, and put it back on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with Public Works.
Okay.
To see if, just by chance, we missed.
Or maybe they didn't ship it and they didn't know what went on, or what was it, or?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had a Public Works meeting and we've discussed it. It was mainly, uh, the snow and, and removal policy and the loader. And then just some of the other projects, so that's all I have. I just had a public works meeting, and we've discussed it, it was mainly, uh, the snow and, and removal policy and the loader, and then just some of the other projects, so, that's all I have. So with that, we will, we are gonna move into a closed session, the purpose of the closed meeting will be to meet in a in a closed session permitted under Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A, for the purpose of conducting the city administrator's performance review. So with that, we'll move into a closed session, and, uh, we'll reopen after the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.